The advice that proper notice has been given by the township council in accordance with the Sunshine Law in the following manner. Notice advertised in the Brooklyn County Times and Camden Carrier Post on January 11, 2017, and posted on the bulletin board on the same date. Mr. Burrell?
Here.
Mrs. Kloty?
Here.
Mr. Schwartz?
Here.
Mr. O'Connell?
Here.
Mr. Ketchum?
Here. So getting to everybody, we have some action items that we need to address. First are resolutions, and the first of which being Resolution 2017-97, which is approving a raffle license number 524 for Friends of Ron Incorporated.
So moved. Sir?
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-98. This is a refund of a duplicate tax payment for Block 118 dot 13, Lot 2.
Motion approved.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Next is Resolution 2017-99, authorizing executive session to discuss the following: It's litigation of Fair Share Housing versus Delran Township.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. And I would ask for motion to approve the minutes, the work session, and the action meeting on April 25, 2017.
So moved. Sir?
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. And a motion to approve the executive session on April 25, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Excuse me?
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. And a motion to approve the minutes for the public meeting on May 2, 2017.
So moved.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty?
Excuse me.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye. Okay, so we have a full agenda, and we do have our executive session at the end, so let's move right along and go right to the first request, which is a request for the use of Lake Lonnie. And Jeff, you want to give us some background? It seems pretty simple.
Sure, we have Boy Scouts and Cub Scouts requesting Lake Lonnie use of the lake facilities and property June 2 through 4 to indicate that in the direction John Warren, they're going to bring in a new property. And they're providing an insurance, if they've done this in the past.
Do you need all the recordings?
Yes, yes.
Anybody have any questions? Do we need anything other than a nod of approval?
Yes.
I think we're all good. Everybody's good. I see nodding heads.
We got it.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, next we have a memorandum of understanding. This is about the issue with the antenna that we need for the cameras, security cameras. Jeff, do you want to give us the nuts and bolts?
We have security cameras in community park. One of the difficulties we've had with the cameras is that if you look at them, there's a little bit of a motion delay. Somebody walks, you see them skip, they kind of jump around a little bit. And one of the, it didn't meet to our satisfaction, so we kept on going back to the vendor indicating that we had a problem with it and we wanted to improve. And they originally wanted to have the antenna where our antenna is here, which would have worked fine, except for it interfered with Jerry DeSanto's public works and communications. So as a result, they went and approached the county, the county satellite building next to community park. It'll work fine from there, and it'll take care of the problem. They're making, they're paying for everything, because this is extra than what we had anticipated. They're paying for everything to do the installation. The only thing is that the county wants from us that we sign the agreement, obviously, because it's our antenna. And secondly, is that we exercise the memorandum of understanding and sent it to W's office for review. And I think the only other comment that you guys had was that they should hold us. We have to hold them harmless. And he asked for the same thing back. That's the only other thing. So if everybody would be good with that, then it's like a resolution forward.
Is the public meeting soon enough?
Yeah, we didn't have a resolution.
Oh.
No, not on the schedule.
We have just the same.
Not on the schedule.
Even in light of?
Yeah, that should be fine.
Okay.
Jeff, how's the park been recently? I think it's been pretty good.
We had some early on. We had some little things, not a lot. I mean, it seemed like during the snowstorms, we had somebody doing donuts on the piece of property that's for future soccer slash lacrosse field, whatever you want to say. There were some donuts out there, but it appears that people are coming from somewhere, not even coming through the main gate in a lot of instances, that they're gaining access in other directions. So we had some of that, and it was always at night difficult to pick up, you know, who they were. Beyond that, it hasn't been bad, especially recently.
Okay, so we're good with that? We'll put that on the public meeting. Next, we have some sewer bill, billing, a lot of sewer bill adjustments.
Well, we held them for, usually we bring these to you every two weeks. I held them for one meeting rather than.
Okay.
And I mean, not that we won't have others, but tried to do a pull it once. If you want, for the first one, essentially, they were, there was a mistake in their billing. Their billing has changed three times, and they're using 1,000 to 2,000 gallons a month, and we recommend adjusting it to the minimum bill.
Is that one with the elderly?
Yes.
Yeah. So the billing was, was billing error?
Yes. Yeah, the use of, the consumption is correct. They, when the husband died, they kept on, I think she felt she needed to open a new account or something, and it opened it two or three times, and they were getting the old account, so she was getting multiple bills. And when they, when we review it, it's just one, there's only one bill, and the consumption was actually well below minimum.
Okay.
The second one.
Should we just say okay or no, not okay?
Yeah.
As we go, so we don't have to go back?
Yes, okay.
So everybody's?
Yeah, okay. Block 110, Lot 13, this resident had a hot tub. Grandson turned.
Wait, wait, wait.
You skipped your tub too much.
You missed, you're out of order. You're out of order, Mr. Hatcher. You have a page out.
When you printed it, you.
Here.
I missed something? Oh, I missed my page.
So it just said, "Objection."
I got that, and there was a mistake. Yeah, that's the second page.
So the one we said objection was 67 and 11.01.
67, 11.01.
Okay, that's the top of the table.
All right, I'll go back to the start. The first, and then the next one was a leak in a toilet.
This is 118 lot?
118 lot, 4.03. During the billing period, they provided a bill, their toilet was rebuilt in September 216, and reviewing everything, it looks like that it's a minimum billing. We recommend that it be removed back to the minimum.
Everybody's good with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Block 9.05, Lot 2. This is one that's kind of interesting. It's a commercial property that was not red for five years, and as a result, it showed some ridiculous amount of consumption. We recommend, and we've actually adjusted the bill, we recommend that it be reduced down to 308 eighty per quarter. The next one is Block 4, Lot 14. He fixed the toilet himself. He did attach a receipt from Lowe's, and the billing after the correction was made has been minimum, we recommend the minimum bill, and it was minimum for the week as well.
Good.
I'll skip 67, Lot 11.01, since we did that one. Go to Block 110, Lot 13. This one, they were on vacation. Their grandson was filling the hot tub, and bill returned. And so their billing went from 12,000 to 24,000 gallons. Looking at their consumption since that issue, and those would have been gallons that were not treated by the sewer plant. They probably just overflowed. They've been using 4,000 to 5,000 gallons a month, so if you wish to make an adjustment, I would suggest that it be at 13,000 gallons. It's about what they can use it for the billing.
That makes sense. I think the key is that we're not processing it.
My grandson's paying for the bill, I guess.
I guess so. Let's do it.
Yeah, grandson better.
Next one is Block 9, Lot 41.24, and this is business. It has a cooling machine, and they had an issue with it where it was defective, and used 27,000 gallons in December to January. For 2017, they've been using 5,000 gallons February, March, 7,000 gallons January, February, 18,000 December, January. I'm sorry, that's the period where they were using the lot.
Progress.
They were using 30,000 gallons since they made, they put in a new system. They have been averaging 23,000 gallons. It's a, it appears that they did have a machine that used additional, additional water. It was processed, and it's a question of whether you guys want to make an adjustment or not.
So let me ask you first, what's a cooling machine?
This is for kind of ice cream business.
Oh, okay.
I try to give you guys information without letting you know.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't affect anybody's.
Refrigeration or something? So, so they're using 5,000 and 7,000 and 18,000 when the machine was not properly functioning?
Correct. Now they're down to about 23,000 instead of 30, and a 30,000.
Total. So what is the, is the 23,000?
Average.
You know, if that's what the average is?
Well, that's what it is with the new machine. They've only had one, one billing cycle.
Well, I would think you'd have to base it on by that.
If you're going to give, I mean, question is, is do you want to give credit for somebody because they upgraded their machinery? That's what.
Was it an upgrade, like, or was it that it was malfunctioning?
They just said it was deficient system is how they put it.
Yeah, it says in the first sentence, they replaced.
What they want?
Or it didn't work?
They want like $7,000, $7,000.
Because they didn't have the.
Right. Because I mean, it was 30, right? So it would be $7,000.
If you're going to replace, or if you're going to adjust it.
So it was 5,000, 7,000, and then, you know, maybe 8,000 or 9,000, maybe 10,000 for the third, the next month?
Yeah, but the high was 30. So I think they're looking at.
That was a total of 30, right?
Yeah, maybe the three figures, it was 30.
So Jeff is saying it was a total of 30, and now with the adjustment, it would be a total of about 23,000?
Right. So if you want to adjust it to the new total, you would adjust it to 23.
This is a one-time?
Yeah, I would think, just like based on like, you know, toilets, if they're running constantly, that's, you know, it still goes into their system when we.
Well, I think.
I would think the same basis.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, it was a malfunctioning piece of equipment, just like a toilet. Just a lot bigger than a toilet.
Yeah, 20, yeah, whatever, 23,000. Is that okay?
It was a malfunctioning, or did they upgrade?
They said it wasn't efficient is what they used. It was operating properly, it wasn't efficient. They used both terms, so.
Well, the other thing.
I'm sorry.
Like, if you upgrade to a better, efficient system, you know, you get a better refrigerator, you don't go back and say you used too much electricity in that time, but if it was broken, I'd understand.
Well, they said it was deficient, and what was either term they used?
Effective. They said it was defective and not inefficient.
Yeah.
They used both terms.
And I think we ought to take into account that they're using less water.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's.
All in all. All right. 23,000?
Yep.
And it could always be adjusted off of that eventually, if there's any other issues, so.
The next one, Block 155, Lot 27, I've written a letter, follow-up letter, trying to get additional information, so I don't want, we don't have enough information for you guys to make a decision on that. Same thing with Block 118.05, Lot 3. I've asked for additional information, I'm waiting for that to come in. But the reason I put both of them, one is to let you know they were filed on a time basis, and both of those were filed in the, actually in the 30 days. The next one, house has been under renovation since August 2016. Resident, no one's living there. It shows 22,000 gallons used during the time period that the building took place. And reviewing the bills, the usage has been significant going back as far as 2015. I don't see any changes either from before and after the renovations, and even the timeframe after they put in this, this notice, is it's still using the water. I mean, I get it, it's under renovations, but somewhere they've got a problem with the, with the water, still getting used.
So, so we could legitimately deny it, and then when they figure out what's going on, they come back and say, we finally found where it's coming from.
I would reject it and tell them to investigate it, because that's.
Figure out why, what, it has a lot of water.
I mean, what you obviously want to see, that we see in all of these others, that somebody's made a change to stop the water usage, that hasn't happened.
Right, right.
So I would say we'll deny that one, and ask them to please figure out where all that water's going, and get back to us.
The next one, the resident at Block 118.03, Lot 23, the resident indicated a water meter malfunction, and that New Jersey American Water Company changed out his meter. The water meter at the time was 33,000 gallons in the 18 section of 19. It does appear from New Jersey Water Company's information that they sent that they did make adjustments on their bill, and gave him credits, and we recommend that we adjust it to the actual usage of 19,000 gallons.
Well, let me just say something on this one, Mike. If he's saying that it should be 19,000, is there any record of it being 19,000, or is it him just saying?
Actually, I just, New Jersey American Water Company made the adjustment and said it should be 19,000.
Oh, New Jersey American did, okay.
And then Blocks 164, Lot 17, water leak in a toilet. They have a bill for the new toilet. They just replaced it in April this year, where usage was averaging 7,000 gallons a month for the last year and a half. The one billing period, it looked like they had, what, 4,000 or 1,000? One billing period of 4,000 gallons. It only had like one bill, one month, since they made the change, and it was, it came in at 4,000 gallons, so I'm not, you know, not completely sure how you want to accept this, because the repair was just done.
So the water was, water usage was 7,000, and it's down to 4,000?
Yeah.
So that would be, for the quarter, would be 12. Is that the minimum or above the minimum?
It's above the minimum by two. I mean, they won't, they won't have a timeframe that falls within what we used for billing, since they're changed over. So I mean, that's the only way I can see the bill is to do three floors, because otherwise.
Right. So there was.
Because they just placed, they just repaired it in April.
It was only 1,000 gallons more than the same month previously. I'm sure I understand that. There was one billing period of 4,000 gallons.
The April period from the previous year was 5,000 gallons.
Oh, I get you. Okay, so the new bill was only down 1,000?
Yeah, for that period, for that month.
Could we do what we did with the two earlier ones, where we were looking for more info to get more bills?
I mean, the only thing, I, we can do a previous year, but I believe it was leading for an extended period of time, if I recall this one.
Yeah, no, what I meant was, since they repaired, made the repair, could we take?
Well, the difficulty is they just made the repair, so this is a timeframe when you can start using water, so it's not really a big time to utilize. I mean, I, my sprinklers are on, it's not this week that they're on.
Can you reach out and see if this had lasted over a year, and if not, we go back and use the last year's totals?
It's at a year.
More than a year.
Yeah, it's been a year and a half.
I hear that.
So really, the only information we have is one month.
If we have 1,000, or if we did.
And they're able, and they're able to do the same thing, if they feel it's an error, they can come back to us with another appeal.
That's pretty low.
Yeah, I mean, 12,000's not a bad bill. Yeah, so let's get it 12,000. Are you all right with that?
And the year before, how about, oh, I should go back two years, like before the toilet started to leak?
I can.
Well, I just, you know.
That's sort of what I write.
Before the toilet leaked, if they were.
I think, I think, I think I did, and I don't think it got me, but I'll look again.
If not.
If it doesn't, I would say 12,000. Take it to the minimum?
Do 12,000, yeah, but let's say a year and a half ago, they were minimum.
I'll bring it back if it was less than that.
Okay.
Do we do the first one on the list?
Yes.
Yeah.
No.
I think we did. I saw that too, and I was like.
No, we didn't.
The very first one.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you, Jamie.
Thank you. So going back to Block 1, Lot 31? Block 1?
Block 1, Lot 31. Yeah, no water usage during the billing period. Information on New Jersey Water Company said did not translate properly, and he should receive the minimum bill. We have found several, we have found several of these where, for whatever reason, when you go to New Jersey Water Company, being in access, New Jersey American Water Company suck and look at billing, and the information wasn't there. But in reviewing what we have, we think they should be.
It says the information was also fixed, and the leak had no impact on the billing period. So are they at minimum?
No usage.
I have to go back on this one. I honestly forget this one.
You should have received the minimum bill.
When I go back on this one, I'll bring this one back to you, because I honestly forget this one.
No worries. Okay, so it looks like we have five new homes. This is all part of the new development. Peach tree court.
Pear tree.
Pear tree court, one of the fruit tree courts. This is 1301, 1311, 1318, 1320, and 1322. These are new accounts.
It's a summer hill.
And what do we, I don't know that we've, we've ever had to, we have to approve new accounts? And what was the criteria that we use for?
It's a minimum bill we do at the public meeting.
Oh, okay.
The ones we do routinely.
Yeah. Oh, oh, okay. So this is a, this is like a new owner, except it's a new property. So there is no, there is no.
Do you start with the minimum?
Yep.
So now I'll, now I'll start receiving bills from the July 4th.
They can damage it after.
Soon as we get them activated.
Yes.
300 donuts for.
Okay, so the next item, active, goes back to the trash removal for the Summer Hill condominium, and the agreement that I believe we talked about, that, that, I, for a while. So Jeff, just to get everybody up to speed, if you would, on this, or?
Sure, we, we bid out, when we bid out the trash contract, one of the things we had was a deletion item. We were, trash pickup for the Summer Hill condominium association, because they did not want to participate in our trash removal, and as a result, we negotiated with them that they would receive $1,377.17 per month to reimburse them, because that basically is what would have cost us if they had gone with our contract. They, one of the reasons they don't go with our contract, we provide once a week trash collection to the condominiums, just like we do to the homeowners and the condominium association, once twice a week, pick up with their dumpsters. So we've negotiated a cost of once a week, and they make up the difference. So as a result, there was a need to amend or come up with a agreement between the Summer Hill condominium association and the township, and it's been sent out and re-sent, and now it's back, and so all we need to do is, is have council pass resolutions to sign it on behalf of the township.
So the abridged version of that is, we would reimburse them the amount that it would cost us if we were just collecting the garbage?
Yes.
And then they, they will have fancier, more, more frequent collection. They can pay the difference, but we'll, we, we have an obligation to pay what is, what we would, what we would pay for any other residents. So we're okay to do this? We, do we need to authorize, can we sign this? Is that what we're doing here today?
Yeah, there's a resolution.
There's a resolution, and that's going to be on the public meeting, or that's going to be tonight?
I'll for you to do it tonight, if you do it tonight.
Do we have a number, Jamie?
Yeah, we do. We actually have the resolution.
Yeah.
So, so real quick, I'll, Resolution 2017-100, whereas township Delran, the Summer Hill condominium association, determine it's the best interest of both parties to reimburse the Summer Hill condominium association for the trash removal services, and whereas we're not, they're not participating in the trash removal services under the township's contract with the public services of New Jersey, whereas the township and the association have agreed the township sell, reimburse the association the amount of $1,377.17 per month for the term of the agreement, and now therefore be resolved, the council authorized the mayor to sign the agreement to the township and the association to provide for this reimbursement.
Motion approved.
So.
Do you need voice call or roll call?
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Burrell?
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty?
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz?
Aye.
Mr. O'Connell?
Aye.
Mr. Ketchum?
Aye.
I have one question, that, that resolution, that's not required after this year, right? We can actually set the budget where we wouldn't have to reimburse, we, you know what I'm saying? Or is that a resolution that's effective every year? You know what I'm saying? In other words, since now with the trash collection, we were going away from the two that we were, that they want the two, and we were getting money for the two originally. Next?
I don't pay them money, I don't know.
Well, we're reimbursing them, the money, right?
Reimbursing them for.
For their, so they can do their.
For once, for once, the value of once a week.
Correct, so next year. Do we have to go through the same thing and get another resolution, or can we modify what they pay us, so we don't have to go through the resolution and refund them?
Now we have to do the resolution.
And from that.
So next on the agenda is a recommendation from our code enforcement officer Ted. He has requested that, he's had a couple of complaints over the past year regarding play equipment for kids assembled in the front yard, and he would like us to agree to ordinance prohibiting portable play equipment, in his words. And he feels it's an eyesore, a safety issue, and we take your, the explanation away from you, Jeff. This is, he's talking about prohibiting, or Jeff's memo to us said it was prohibiting such activities as trampolines and other activities in the front yard. So, you know, portable play activities that could probably also include basketball hoops, and that is a slippery slope. Anybody have an opinion on that?
Yeah, I guess.
I think it's.
It's private property.
Private property.
Yeah.
It's a slippery slope.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I'm glad that, you know, he's looking for ideas, but I don't think this is the right one.
He's reacting to complaints he's getting from residents, and that some people have put trampolines in their front yard because they have pools in their backyard, and said they don't have space. And then other residents are calling him, complaining, asking him to enforce it, or that it doesn't exist. So he wanted to.
I can see his point.
So I get it, he said he's had two complaints over the past year. You know, I don't know that we can, I don't know how it would be a safety issue unless people sprung up the trampoline and into the street.
Or maybe he's just thinking kids playing in the front where there's traffic, if, you know, as they're playing, they may run across the street if someone sees the kids on the trampoline, or, but it's still their property.
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a difficult thing. You know, do we have, and I don't, you know, there's so many ordinances, do we have something that indicates that play must be safe? I mean, other than the safety issue, I don't know if we will be able to stand on to make such a change.
Yeah, but even safe, who's in front of it, safe? Isn't that, you know, the responsibility of the parents to?
Yeah, that's exactly what I'm saying, it's the responsibility of the parents, and we think it's safe.
Thank you, but no.
Yeah.
If we see more complaints.
Yeah, yeah, let's, let's.
Yeah, I think Tyler's got a good point. If we have more complaints, it's a different story.
Okay. Tell Ted, feel free to come back to us, though. You know, I like the fact, I think we all like the fact that he's.
He's been brought.[1759.12] He's being proactive.
Next, we had a request from a gentleman who's interested in having a fibrodisplasia assupicians progressive awareness initiative or an FOP awareness proclamation. Is there...didn't we...what we said, we talk about it here? I don't...you know, unless somebody has an objection, it doesn't prohibit...it doesn't cost us anything.
That's just one model that...
Right. And we can have...I think we can do this internally, no offense, just to draft this to...in support of that. And, you know, I know it opens up a precedent, but that's okay. I think this is a worthy cause and this gentleman has put out a yeoman's effort to bring awareness to this disease. So unless anybody has an objection, I think we're going to put it on public. Is that correct? We'll have a resolution to the public meeting?
Yeah, I'll reach out to him and let him know. I don't know if he plans on attending, but...
Tell him you can watch us.
I think he's supposed to have the book.
Yeah, he'll be able to. Yeah. Yeah, we can let him know, but I don't feel that he wants to drive an hour to him just to watch.
So you tell him he watches on live stream.
Yeah, we're not live, unless Chuck's going to be live. We're not live, we're recorded, live on tape.
Live on tape.
I love that, live on tape. Okay, so next is a request to waive the fee, the road opening permit fee for work that's being done for Delran High School. I believe there is some precedent for that. You know, I think unless there's cost to the township, that this is taking money from one pocket of the residents and putting it in the other. Jeff, is there anything that I've missed on this that's...
No, I mean, same is same within the driveway and so now see an issue with it.
So we...anybody have a problem with waiving that fee? Okay, so do we need to do anything with that or is that just... Go ahead.
Just a motion.
So there's no resolution or it's just a motion?
No, it's a motion.
So if I could have a motion to authorize the waiver of the road opening permit fee for Delran High School's work as described in the memorandum?
Any questions?
Second. All in favor? Aye. Close, motion carries. On behalf of the Board of Education. Thank you, everyone. I have no connection with the Board of Education, but I'm sure they'll be able to. Okay, next would be the authorization for the appointing of a contractor for the sand filter. Our memo indicated that as long as the estoppel period, no one complained during the estoppel period. And we're not through that. How do we handle that since the estoppel period is not yet complete?
Essentially what they're looking for, the contractor doesn't hold the bid up any longer. So what they're asking is that you only have a couple of days for it to run out.
Right, the 20 days.
Is that if you could do the approval contingent upon the estoppel period.
So I was looking for, are we allowed to do that on a contingency? Are we allowed to do that on a contingency?
Yes, you are.
Okay. See how easy that was?
Jeff, I just have one question.
Yes, sir.
They were the little bidder, right?
They were.
Who's the company?
CNH Industrial Services. The engineer felt that they were a good contractor. We had nine bids, if you'll recall, and several of them were in the same area. So what we were concerned with is we didn't want to throw the bids out and start over because then we'd end up in a higher bid.
Yeah, they extended. I just wanted you to decide to put the record down.
Yeah. Sure. And the...the resolution we would pass indicates that the bid submitted did not contain any irregularities which would deem their bid to be not responsive and they had no prior negative history to the township and CNH is to be considered a responsible bidder. So do we need to do this tonight?
We're awarding the contract, though?
Yes, this would be awarding the contract.
All right, I'll make a motion to award the contractor status.
I'll see.
Mr. Barrow.
Aye.
Mrs. Kloty.
Aye.
Mr. Schwartz.
Aye.
Okay. So next we have the discussion surrounding Verizon's request for right-of-way access to upgrade and install antennas. I don't want to use the wrong terms. I do have some questions, but I'm going to ask Jeff to explain this as explained. We do have a memorandum. I don't know, it says attorney-client privilege. Is that...are we allowed to talk about what's in?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So in essence, they...you know, my understanding is that they want to install these small little modules, cones?
Nodes.
Nodes, I should have known. Nodes on top of existing poles. And there was a one term that kind of raised the hair on the back of my neck, which was to use law...requesting the township to use facilities lawfully erected in the public right-of-way, respectfully request to be placed over the next agenda. Where's the...Jeff, you know what I'm talking about. Where they ask for...I'm concerned if they want to install additional poles. Is that...is that what...
I don't think it's part of the proposal.
Yeah, they indicated that they might want to install additional poles. And if you recall, I was at the follow-up and I followed up with an email with them. Asked exactly where they're going to install the nodes, number one.
Right.
And where they would install the new poles. And I kind of got a vague response saying essentially that they'll tell us as it gets closer is about what it says. They don't know where the...you know, if they're going to have additional poles. And that's the part of the concern with me is that they didn't provide very specific information so that you guys could review it and take a look at how it might be affecting the neighborhood.
Can we tell them that we'll let them know as it gets closer? That we'll approve them if they're going to put it on the poles, but if they want to put additional poles, we want to know where before they can do it?
Potentially, yes.
And we ask them also for FiOS while we're at it?
I love that.
How's your idea of just hope that?
I'm serious. I mean, they're asking us for FiOS. I mean, I know that there's issues with them doing it and like not doing it in Moorestown and being able to get here and stuff, but I mean, it's been a major issue in the town that everybody's wanted FiOS and we should look in to try to get it.
I don't know that it's characters that way. They want a choice.
There's no competition.
Yeah.
I'm just saying that.
But didn't they say FiOS, were they in Maple Shade? I remember reading that they...
Harder Maple Shade.
Yeah, they did a study that they didn't think it would be profitable.
Yeah.
And that it was...
Okay.
That was my understanding. I'm not sure if that's correct or not, but...
So there is a cost. I was...the Comcast guy stopped at my house today because I left Comcast. So now they come with excellent customer service to try and get me back a little late. And I talked about FiOS. So I said, you know, right now you have a bit of a monopoly, but when and if FiOS comes. And he said, well, it costs a certain amount of money and, you know, by the time you install FiOS, we're going to come right on the heels of that, you know, after two years with their whatever it is. I'm sure we can mention that.
Exactly.
But in the meantime, I...the issue on the agenda is whether we let them do this. And I think on the poles is fine. But we'd like to know where they want to put additional poles. I saw the pictures that they sent as, you know, but I don't know. I guess it's these little...
Things on the top of the nodes?
The thing on the top of...the third picture that they included, it looks like this is a...this is a new pole only.
Yeah. Little bird feeder in the middle.
Brian, are you allowed to say that they can't put additional poles? Like I know in your memo, you said that there's some statute that we have to allow.
There's a federal statute that says that you can't have a law that prohibits them from working in the right-of-way. But the township could adjust its ordinance to require any pole, any new pole that was going to be installed just for the node to have to be by public hearing. So that just makes it harder for them to do that and would incentivize them to use regular poles. Stop them from using a new pole if they really need it and should it get approved in a public hearing. But if you wanted a higher degree of control than you wanted now, you'd need to make an amendment to your ordinances.
Maybe we should do that.
Well, before we do that, can I ask a question? In the letter to Jamie from Verizon on November 18th, they said questions about the proposal could be directed to a person and a phone number. Have you reached out to that person and a phone number and asked him about the proposal?
They directed questions to him.
And did they...have they not given us an answer yet?
They gave us non-specific answers. I mean, because it echoes in their original letter, it says they want non-site-specific consent. And that's the difficulty is when you guys met the last time and we talked about it is you wanted to know where they were going to install and whether, where, and if they were going to install new poles. Those were the questions along with a question that we've had about including...
Town wide one?
Yeah, Wi-Fi. And so I thought the answer was vague.
Town wide, free Wi-Fi?
Whether we could access, you know, when they were doing these installations.
Well, yeah, actually that was worth bringing up because I participated in Verizon's pushing hard for smart cities technology. And this is like kind of a step in that direction. So it might be a good opportunity to...I know we created a supplement, but all this kind of came to fruition and we can get a sit-down with them to talk about what their ideas might be. But I don't see where there's about this particular issue. I think that, you know, if we ask them to identify the sites, because really if I'm correct, the only real, you know, way that we could get them to alter a claim like that, ordinance or not, is if we can prove that there's a better location for communication for the poles other than where they proposed. I mean, it's pretty one-sided, you know, so that might be the response is we would like the locations. So if we have a challenge, but the only challenge that I think we can live...because I remember it said through this in zoning plenty of times, is that someone would have to say that the reason you can't put the pole there is because it's better served here than where you propose to put it. And that's really the only FCC allowed...
What about if it was a neutral...different location that was, didn't impact service but was more aesthetically pleasing? You know, if there was...they proposed a location that was...
Well, actually, that was something that came up a few times and I don't think that they're obligated, but everyone that we dealt with during those couple of years themselves was zoning. They all agreed to do that.
For cell towers.
Yeah, that was for cell...but it's still the same, you know, it's the access to communication or the sincere...
So if we have...if we insist that they go through the zoning process for a new cell tower, shouldn't we have some process for a new node pole?
And that would be what we have amended the ordinance to be?
So and are we too late to amend the ordinance?
I don't say we're not.
So we could amend an ordinance to say that...
They would follow it and...
Yeah, and I think that depends to residents if gives them at least the opportunity to be heard.
I agree with that.
So what we need to do is say to them that we're in the middle of, or we're in the process of creating an ordinance to address this issue.
My recommendation would be Jeff has asked them a question and they got an vague answer. I would insist on getting a good, a more specific answer and during that time in the middle, we can update the ordinance.
Right. So then we want to authorize Jeff to go back and say, could you be more specific and authorize Lommaro to update the...present an update to the ordinance so that we can address if there's going to be a new pole, they should at least, the residents should be heard and we should have an opportunity to suggest an alternative. We okay with that? Is that stable, everybody said?
Yep.
All right, Ben?
I don't know. Is it...you know, they came and asked us and now it's the order of it, it's all right legally to do, to change the ordinance because we don't want them to do what they want to do. So basically, we don't know what they want to do. So is that okay then to change the ordinance to make sure that we're...I guess it is.
We're not stopping them from doing anything. We're just kind of giving a little bit of definition to the process. It's a new technology. The township hasn't seen this issue before, so we're now adjusting with the technology.
Yeah, okay, that's...
We just thought we'd give them a blank.
No, I didn't want to give them a blank slate either, but I wanted to make sure that, you know...
Yeah, and after kind of what happened with the new utility poles as it is in some neighborhoods, where just all of a sudden there's 65 old poles in front of our house and nobody had any idea what was going to happen. Yeah, it's a good idea.
Okay. We all...everybody has direction. So we are through the public portion of the agenda. So I'll ask for reports from members of our team. Jamie, do you have a report from...
Well, I'll just mention that the next two months for both June and July, our public meeting has been moved to the second Tuesday and we'll have one work session, which is the fourth Tuesday, just as a reminder to everyone.
Because maybe the next month is the primary and the next month is the fourth of July. Okay. Everybody's duly noted, we'll put it on the calendar or post it.
Yeah, it's already on the calendar. It's been that way since we adopted our meeting schedule last January, so there's no advertising or anything. I just, as a reminder, it's closer.
I think we might want to post something on the Facebook page just as a reminder.
Okay, yeah, I can do that.
Maybe we can go back to the website calendar.
Yeah.
I don't know. It is a calendar, but I don't know if it looks like this.
The calendar that's on the website, it's actually a Google calendar.
Oh, okay.
Comes from...that's how I updated through Google. Yeah, that's just like mine.
Yes. Okay. Jeff, anything for us in open?
No report.
No report, Jeff. Brian?
Very briefly, 903 Oak, coal commissioners came back with the same value as our appraisal, so we are moving forward on that.
Good. Dan, any report for us today?
Yes, Gary. I'd like to thank the mayor for asking me to represent Delran. The Board of Freeholders invited him and Ken couldn't make it, so he asked me if I would subform. On May 17th, they held a emergency services memorial service for fire and EMT. And if you will permit me, we had a member of the Delran Fire Company, number two. I didn't know the gentleman. His name is Henry Smokey Williams. He passed away in March of 1995. It says firefighter Williams served as a captain of the fire police for many years. He was also a crewman for the New Jersey State Forest Fire Service. On that fateful day, Smokey was participating in the annual physical performance evaluation at Division B headquarters and he suffered a fatal heart attack. And that's what the memorial service is about. It's fire and EMT from all over the county that passed away in service. And I was very happy to do it and I appreciate it, Ken. And I was glad to represent the town.
Thank you.
Yeah, just real quick, I saw the street cleaner out to name in town, so I just want to thank public works for that. That's it? Thank you.
Mike, any report? Just have a safe, hopefully, if we could.
Sorry, it won't be...it won't be long, but the chickens are back. The bar she's absolutely delicious. I have to...okay.
There are two copies?
No, there's just one.
You want us all to join, is that what it says?
Yeah, all joined, yeah. What we have, last night the chicken advisory board met and they elected their board. The chicken group met and they elected their board. And I was wondering if we would be able to put the five members of the board on...you're all laughing, but you know...
No.
I think it's so high.
You're laughing.
Well, I'm thinking of some of the things, they were trying to think of names for them like the...
The chicken team.
The hen house or the chicken team. And we wanted...and they have to go to school. So someone said, I think it should be Cluck You. And I was like, oh my God. There were some funny people on the stage.
Maybe not, but I'm going to be careful with that.
Yeah, oh, I know, no, they were just teasing, but they were... Yeah, oh, I know, no, they were just teasing, but they were, they're very excited and very dedicated, I think, and there's going to be a much smaller group of people, I think, than even the 20. But there are five members on the board, and they were, I was wondering if we could announce them, and I know the mayor and council have to approve them at a public meeting. So if I gave you the names, it's Beth Morehouse, she is a veterinarian and a veterinarian educator, and she will be the president of the chicken board. Jill Rosbold, Sylvia Gorgastiza, Mike Gorgastiza, and Beth Johnson. And Beth, Mr. Johnson is a policeman, her, their, his wife, Beth. So they, they've all taken the class, they're all willing to work, and the board also created a sample form, and they felt that this would be, you know, and before they get their license, they have to do a number of things. They have to complete a class, which is a certified class. We have a woman, Gwen Getbell, who will, said she would take on the responsibility of certifying everyone in Delran that would want to have chickens. And she's one of the only one of people in the area that has a certified chicken course. And they would have to have a, they would have to take them into a class, they would have to pay the $10 license fee. They could, since it's a two-year pilot, they could pay $20, or they could pay $10 a year. They would have to have a pre-site visit, where are you going to put your, and that's the advisory board, where are you going to put your coop and your run? Are you within distances? They would have to build their coop and run, they would have to have a post-site evaluation, and then they would be approved to be part of the pilot, and then they would come to get their, their license, and then they could start their chickens. And there will only be four chickens, and this is just preliminary, and so I just thought, we just got it last night, so I couldn't get it to anyone earlier. If you wanted to look at it and come up with, if you have any additional changes or anything that you think they would, would want to, you know, want to change, they're, they're making some changes already from the meeting last night, someone made this, but if you had, they'd like other eyes to see if, if there's any other changes you'd like, any requirements you would like, they would be glad to do that. And then there, there will issue 20 of them, only 20, that's what the pilot said. So we would number these pages, one to 20, and when they were gone, that was it, in the same time that the licenses, there would be 20. And I, you know, they wanted to know also, I have a question, Beth, the chair wants to know, because the ordinance has been passed, will, and I think it has passed the 30 days or close to it, can they start, I mean, can, can they now start applying? Can they start to, you know, apply for the pre-site visit and, is that, is that possible now? Is that the timing? I just don't know. Eight, no, it was May.
No, it was just May, so it's probably not quite up yet.
I think it's the same time as the... The 25th? The other, the stop, so what was it, Friday? That'd be Thursday. The 25th, Thursday. Twenty days after it's in the paper.
Right, which was probably the, what did I say, the Friday after the meeting, and the meeting was May 2nd.
That's what we thought, they did...
So was the 5th, so it's probably going to be at the end of this week.
Oh, okay. And I think that they would prefer even to have their board appointed first by mayor and council, and then they'll give the go-ahead.
Yeah, I think they should, that's what I was going to say, I think that they should be...
So it'll be after like June 7th or 8th?
Right.
So this, this board, this advisory board is going to be considered like the Green Team type, it's going to be the positions that'll be, I assume, for a certain period of time, or are we treating, I mean, the way we do it, we have terms, so...
Okay, so that's a good question.
The pilot, you just do it for the pilot?
Pilot is two years.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, though, these are kind of, we're asking questions with that.
All right, no, that would be, that would be, I think, something.
That's the first thing I had.
Okay.
Yeah, I think you appoint them, I mean, my opinion would be to appoint them until...
I always think it's appointed in terms.
For the term of the pilot?
For the term of the pilot, and then after the pilot, if it continues and we need the chicken advisory board to move forward, then maybe stagger the terms if the chicken advisory board is to stay.
And the other thing, real quick on this?
Yes.
I'm looking at, we have the telephone number, website, tell me what you guys think, but is there any way we can have like a advisory board like linked to our site, or would it be the Delran attached site directly?
It should be on the township, so, I mean, we could have a page for the chicken advisory board.
Okay, and the same thing with the phone number, we should have like a, I mean, an extension to it rather than just having, where they, they're not going to know where to go. It's going to go 7-74, where do you go?
Yeah, but it's the advisory board, I will put my...
No, we can add an extension.
We'll put my...
As I'm saying, so there just needs to be, if these, if that's going to be somebody calls in and they're not going to let you go.
Well, I think the advisory board will...
We can put my extension on there for chicken.
Those are the only things, that's it. I noticed where it's at.
Okay, so that you want an extension here?
Well, yeah, it should be directed to somebody.
Was it, you said $10 or $20?
It's, that's, that's going to be changed at one time, because that's for the two-year program, the two-year, it's a, it'll be $10 a year, and the pilot is two years. So we're, we're changing that, that was a mistake on that, yes.
They'll apply every year?
After the pilot, yes, they'll apply every year for a license. And the chicken advisory board said that they would report to us quarterly for the first year of the pilot, if that would be acceptable, and then yearly like every other board after that. Or if you want them to report quarterly...
Or on request.
Okay, all right.
We, we, you know, we have an issue, we have a question.
Okay.
Patty, let me ask you, on the back of this application under for official use, I know you were saying for us to give them permission to start with the pre-site visits, don't they have to attend the mandatory class first?
Yes, verification of attendance and mandatory class is there.
Right, I mean, I realize that's for official use, but that's the process they have to go through. So if we tell them to go ahead with pre-site visits and yet the people participating in the pilot haven't attended the class yet, is that, is that copasetic?
No, no, they...
They have to go to the class first.
They would have to, yes, they would have to go to the class first. So you think that should be on, before?
Can they just do all these concurrently, and when all of these are filled out, then they could go?
I guess that's what I asked.
I guess they could, I guess, the only thing they could not, they could not have chickens until they, yeah.
So if they wanted to, if they felt like they wanted to...
No, I take that back.
Get the pre-site...
No, I think they have to go to the class first, because the class gives them all the information...
Just tell them about how to build the site.
Where the coop should be, the, the, the type of coop, so the date and location of the class. So I think, yeah, they, they would have to, when they pick this up, it will, this is what they'll have, this is the order that they have to follow.
Well, the reason I ask that is because, I'm sorry, you were asking us to give them permission to do that, to do the pre-site, schedule pre-site visits, but...
I think I'm asking permission to, can they begin handing this paper out?
Oh, okay.
That's what I'm asking permission, can they hand this out, and then can they start? But if you'd like me to rearrange this, or them to rearrange it?
No, 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 I just wanted to...
And I think they're getting rid of for official use only, they're, they're not going to have that there either, they, it's just going to be...
Yeah, I would think so.
Mike, you go first.
No, I'm just saying, I really think that this is administrative function, like when Jeff is set up to operate, that would really be, would direct it from here, correct with that?
Yeah, this is, this isn't the license, this, we have to hand this into the administration, and they would look at this and decide whether they issue the license or not.
Gotcha.
Yes, we're not, the chicken advisory board is not issuing any licenses, that's going to come from...
But I agree with Mike, most likely, I would think the administration's going to have like a database, and when they get that, they'll be updating their database with all the information. So the administration's going to be handling probably all the input and all that.
Would that sound like assigning the phone number and setting up the website, like if anyone wants to, Jeff's office?
Even if it's a spreadsheet?
Well, I...
I can help through.
Hey, Patty, the only thing, I was going to say, we probably should go online, so it's somewhere in one location instead of them handing it out, you get over 20, then it was...
They have to, they have to come to your...
You get the application.
To, they have to come, because that's what we thought, if it was online, people could print it, we wouldn't have any, it's, there will be a, a list of, the 20th of these, and then, once they're 20, no, they have to come here. And that's another question they, they have, they're going to create a, a website as well. Where do you, would you want them to have a, like, separate, like a link?
Well, this is, this is a township...
The chicken advisory board's going to create a website?
No, I think the chicken, what, what do you think we should, they, I think they just want to...
Yeah.
I thought it was under the Green Team, no?
It's under the Green Team, so it should, they should put their link under the Green Team, that's what they want to, where should it be? Under the Green Team.
It should be part of, I mean, part of the page.
Yeah, I don't know, should they have a separate?
No, 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 it'll be under, that's what they want, does it go under the, does it just go on?
You're saying a link, not a page?
Well, see, I'm probably using the long-term analogy.
So I think there should be a page in there, under the Green Team. We could, well, we'll figure that out, but it should be, this is, this is a township thing.
Yes, oh, yeah, that's what they, yes.
Just somebody else being able to access the website and updating it, you know, we just want to make sure that we have somebody to work with.
Yes, yeah, yeah. No, they, they, that's what they said, they're not going to do anything to it, they just want it somewhere, where, where would you want, that's what they said. And they're going to operate under the, the Green Team.
Cool.
Okay, and, no, that's it.
Sure.
And we're sorry that the parking event was canceled, and we promise we will never come to you again for it, because we are not doing it ever again.
Apparently.
Apparently, it was not mentioned at all.
It was with all the ring?
Oh, that ring was unbelievable. So, yeah, it's just canceled.
So I'm, the coop, the coop group, that went, that's out.
The coop group, that's good.
Rings it a prayer, no. Okay, so I just have a couple of small things, well, actually, they're not, there's two things that involve shopping centers. One is, I've had people complain to me about, if you, if you're leaving Chick-fil-A going toward where Radio Shack used to be, and you look to the left, the bushes are now very much grown up since, since that thing, and you cannot see cars coming in off the highway. So can we have, out of Ted, I guess, go in there and say, look, the sightlines are bad, or...
Very good, yeah.
So if you're, if you're, if you're in the parking lot, and you're at, you're coming away from Chick-fil-A, you're just leaving the, say, the drive-through of Chick-fil-A, you're going to, and right in front of you would be H&R Block and, and what used to be Radio Shack, and you're going to make a left, you look, there's bushes that are so grown that you can't see down there. So if we, can you, is that something that we can have Ted look into, or someone? You can, you can?
So it would be the landlord that owns those properties?
Yeah, yeah, I think this is just a, it's just overgrown, and, and another meeting, I want to talk about, you know, public, commercial properties that, that, and they were just recently sold that property, and I, I want to make sure that those, I want to talk to the council about perhaps an acting, an ordinance that says, if you're going to sell your property, and when it transfers, it has to be the way it was approved by planning or zoning, because a lot of that stuff gets lost in the translation, so now you have a new owner and they go, hey, it wasn't me, you know, it was, I bought the property. But I think it should be, perhaps be the seller's responsibility to get it back to where it was approved to be, like this situation, no fall of their own, no derelict, just, you know, as bushes grow up, they have to be cut back, or stuff dies, and it was supposed to have 22 trees, it has 18 now, stuff like that. Second thing is a perennial favorite, and that is the Heritage Square parking lot.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Jeff to have Ted go back there, I took the liberty this afternoon, and I'll pass this around. This looks like something out of a war zone.
Every year.
Every year, so there, there are, believe it or not, this, this, I used, I used this pen as a marker, and this little line right here is this pen. So that's, that'll tell you just how big this is, you, some of them, because of the rain, some of them you could take a swim in, and it's just, it's just horrible, I'll pass these around for you, but, and this is, this is the handicap spot, which is, which is barely traversable. And this is one small section, just the very front lane, I didn't even go in there. And the, the main entrance, that's actually right behind Patient First, is all alligatored, all, all potholes, all been built, you know, this, the, if, if this was any of our streets, they'd have to be on the top of the list, because these are horrible. And, you know, again, even, even within the parking lot itself, and the first one right in front of the post office, coming along that thing, it's just, it, it, it's not like it's one small section, it's the whole darn thing. So I'll pass this around, if you get to the big giant blue eye, you've gone too far. And, and then if you get to the end, it'll just stop, and I'll pass it on if anybody wants to see, and you can look or pass or whatever. And, yeah, I even, a resident stopped me when I was taking this picture, said, I am so happy to be doing something about this parking lot, so. And finally, last Tuesday, former councilman Ogie Ogizalik passed, and his services were private, and, but I just thought it would be something that, you know, while Ogie and I always butt heads, we, it was a friendly competition, and it was sad to see, see him go, but I just wanted to make mention of that, because he did serve as both the police officer and a councilman for a very long time in town. And that's my report. Ken, you have anything for us?
No, that was the only thing I was going to mention, but that's, no, you brought that up. Ogie gave a lot of, a lot of his time to this town, and, you know, like I said, like Gary had said, you know, we did butt heads at times, but at the same time, he was very dedicated to the town as a, as a chief of police, as well as a councilman, and, and I just wanted to send my condolences to the family.
Right. So, thank you. Moving forward, I need a motion to go into public. All in favor? Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so we're in public, everybody knows the routine, you have anything for us for public comment? Oh, okay. Chuck, anything?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
Yes, I do, the Nickover 75 Stewart, Gary, don't throw it out of your chair or faint, but thank you for bringing up Heritage Square, I kept forgetting to mention it. I have one question, 50 Stewart filing, looks like it has been bought. They, yes, one on the corner, they've been in there cleaning it out, they're putting clara beds in, they did have a pile of trash out front there on Sunday, my understanding they had it taken away privately. Now here's my question about the abandoned homes down there. The trash cans that Republic put out are gone. So these people are buying these properties, and there is no trash cans. What happens there?
They, they took the trash cans?
Someone stole them?
We may have, we may have taken them, we didn't...
Any, any, we provided the, the Public Works, the list of all the properties we had recognized as abandoned.
Okay.
A private company delivered them all, and...
Yeah.
Actually, I gave them a list of all the abandoned properties, and asked them not to deliver them, but we found out they were delivering them to them anyway.
Yes, right.
So we had Public Works swallow the next day and take some of them back, so we may have taken them back.
Okay, okay.
We have a list of them, we took them back.
So then if I talk to the homeowner, I can tell them that you guys might have the, because I don't think they know, I think they're new, I think that's one of the, you know, the only problem, you know, you get somebody that's new that's buying a banned property, you know, he had the trash out the way he looks, he paid to have it taken away.
Can we put it on a council board site for new property, or is there...
Especially the abandoned homes, I mean...
In regards to getting their trash cans?
Ken, but it's going to be a little different for everybody, but, yeah.
It's basically the one...
How would they know? That's a good point.
That can is not the prior owner's property, it should be left there, and that should be their can.
But I'm just saying, it's one with the abandoned homes that they collected, though.
Well, then that, that should be on there.
Until we have one there, though, in the, in the news morib about the garbage cans,